Current licensed premises consists of a dining room, lounge, kitchen, and office with exits to Hull Street from the dining room to the south side parking area from the dining area and lounge and rear exit from the kitchen area. The applicant is requesting to alter and extend the licensed premises to include an outdoor seating area patio off the rear of the restaurant. The outdoor space is 22 by 40 feet for a total of 880 square feet and would have 32 additional seats for patrons. The area will be walled, roped, or fenced off. The public is invited to offer public input on this application in writing by emailing jorham@cohassetma.org in advance of the public hearing and can also attend via the Zoom platform, the Zoom information being below. Sign the Cohasset Select Board. So I am going to invite the proponent into the room. I believe it's Mr. Vale. Corey, your hands up. Yep, go ahead.
Just, just for a little bit of clarity, I mean, how, how should we approach this in lieu of, of the extension that we just voted upon? Is this something that we're just general thoughts on that, please?
So just a, just a summary and I'll, I'll then turn it over to Mr. Vale. This, this is a request for a permanent extension of premises. So I think that's part of our conversation with Mr. Vale as to, you know, right now it's extended as we, as we just affirmed through 60 days after the, the governor releases the emergency declaration. So this is a request, if I understand it correctly, for permanent extension of the premises. So I think I'll let Mr. Vale kind of present his comments and what he's interested in doing and why, and then we can talk amongst us, talk with him about these questions. So, hi, Mr. Vale, you, you have the floor. Thanks for being with us.
Fascinating to watch the work that you do and we really appreciate it. I want to start off by saying thank you to the Select Board for everything they did last year to help guide the restaurants and look at things differently in a new light in hopes to, to be of help. And you were. I have, I'd like to also thank everyone that's joined tonight. We've heard from a lot of our regulars and a lot of, a lot of our neighbors and we really do appreciate hearing that. I do have a brief slideshow presentation. Am I able to use that or?
Yep, I believe so. I think we get to make you host. That's they don't even allow me to do that, but that's because I got wonky internet.
Mr. Vale should be able to share.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Thank you. So just a little bit of background, I'll try and keep it brief. I know you're under time constraints, but my name is Ron Vale. My wife Rudy and I own the Corner Stop Eatery at 235 Hull Street. We moved into the neighborhood about 17 years ago. And right off the bat, I knew it was a great culinary corner of the world because I discovered grapevines in my backyard. So I knew it was going to be good luck. And we fell in love with West Corner. It's a bustling, little vibrant neighborhood, including, you know, the best of what we believe is Cohasset, Hingham and Hall, of course. We opened up in 2013, so we've been running it for about seven and a half years and I would not be able to do it had I not lived, had I not lived seven doors down from the restaurant because it is a 24/7 operation. This location has served as a restaurant for over 40 years as Loke's, with Richards, Nero's, of course, and most recently us. So we believe a little bit about Corner Stop. A restaurant is a true reflection of its community and we built Corner Stop to hopefully mirror that. Our concept has always been seasonal modern, modern American fare where three generations can meet and feel comfortable and find something for themselves to enjoy. We do our best to put ourselves out there in the community and support it in any way that we can. From donations to Cohasset Rec, Road Race by the Sea, Situate Animal Shelter, numerous school and church events, too many to name. We've raised over $90,000 for the Breast Cancer Research Foundation. Recently, we received, or last year, February 2020, a fantastic review from the Boston Globe, bringing a little notoriety to this corner of the world. And I think in seven years, we've shown ourselves to be reputable operators. We've employed hundreds in good standing, never a noise complaint or concern raised. We're very proud to have been able to employ lots of local high school kids as their first job and that's been super rewarding. Our neighborhood, our neighborhood, well, in our logo, when we thought of this business, we knew it was the corner, right? So we have those three post, signposts there for Hull, Hingham and Cohasset. And we felt it's important to to really make a stand here in our corner of the world. But West Corner is a mix of commercial and residential property. And there is always a trade-off where those two areas meet. As I said, when we moved in, this was a bustling little town, little part of town and it, and it still is to this day. With that trade-off becomes some of the, some of the problems of, of living where, you know, business thrives and residents meet. And of course, that's parking, noise, traffic, all those things. We know that the sound of the motorcycles coming down 228 is just the sign of spring as they head down to the beach. You know, having a neighborhood restaurant is, I think, something that a lot of us can be proud of and that live in this area. And I, I've heard it from tons of Realtors and other people that they use us as a point of reference for people coming, moving to the area. In fact, when we moved in, we were left to give a certificate for Nero's Restaurant and I can remember coming down here and sitting in the tile mirrored room having a big old pork chop after unpacking and, and a long summer afternoon. But nothing gives us greater joy than to see neighbors and, and people in the community here walking or riding their bikes down to the restaurant. The impact of pandemic pandemic has been great. We're all struggling as restaurants. And that's going to continue. There's not going to be a, a light switch that goes off that makes it better. Many of us have taken on a lot more debt and, you know, in order to, to survive. And even though the, you know, this past year has been crazy for us, as you can imagine, closing down at first about a year ago, March, it was just about this time or middle of March last year, not knowing how to keep our staff safe or our guests safe or how to operate a business. And we had to relearn all that, opening up with just to-go food and then slowly with indoor dining in the patio from last year. But during that time, our revenues have been down 60% and our costs just keep going up through PPE equipment to keep people safe, the outdoor dining that we put in, not to mention, you know, just hard costs of labor and, and, and food. It's been emotionally draining, as you could imagine. And, you know, we understand we're not the only ones going through this and a lot of people are suffering more. But it's been, it, it's been quite a ride. This patio is crucial to our business for a couple of reasons. We always in the past, over these seven and a half years, have seen a downturn come June and July. And that's people wanting to dine out. They either, they, they go down to the beach or they go dine outdoors in their backyard. If we were able to have a patio, it helps to make us a more balanced business, more balanced restaurant and offers something that people are looking for right now. Even with this pandemic, maybe on the downturn, we don't believe that people are going to feel 100% comfortable dining indoors and dining outdoors is going to be, remain a strong sought amenity for the, you know, the few years to come for sure. Indoor dining will be certainly the last to rebound. Our dining habits do change slowly and even at 100% capacity with the six feet foot mandate, we're really still only about 50% of indoor dining space. We've previously considered outdoor dining, but, but it's really the pandemic that it's made it necessary to survive. We had thought hard and long about what we would design and we took a lot of things into consideration and we built something that is very close to residential. It's really a backyard setting with, you know, in a, in a peaceful state of relaxing space with wind chimes and water features, swaying grasses, light jazz and music and, and, and things like that. We've had a test run of four months. We opened up in July of last year on the patio and ran through October. And it was received with overwhelming enthusiasm. People are still discovering that we had a patio space. They didn't know that. We, you know, certainly someone had posted this meeting coming up on Cohasset 143 Facebook and, you know, we hope the board might get a chance to look that over because it's been largely positive. And we believe that outdoor dining is, is going to be appealing beyond the pandemic. I have a brief video to show you about what the, the patio looks like. So as you can see, it's not quite a Margaritaville type of vibe, but you know, I think it's important to, to ask, you know, is the Corner Stop the type of business you want to have in your neighborhood of town? Have we shown ourselves to be the type of operators worthy of your trust, respectful and supportive of the community? Do you want to help us evolve and become stronger from a very difficult year? Do you want to offer the community what it overwhelmingly supports and demands, outdoor dining space as we rebound from this past year? If the answer is yes, then we humbly ask for your approval on what will be a vital part of our business as we recover from COVID. And that is my spiel.
Great. Thank, thank you. Thank, thank you very much, Ron. I'm going to just frame sort of how we're going to take the next few minutes. I'm certainly the Select Board will ask questions first. If there are people participating on the Zoom platform who would like to make a comment, please use the Q and A feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen, type in your name, your address and, and in your, in your comment. And again, we'll, you know, we'll read through the comments. If somebody would like to be moved into the Zoom room, we can do that on a limited basis. I ask that you not be repetitive. Again, and, and just for the record and to assure people that did communicate with the board, we received a number of emails, you know, talking about the importance of the business and also from some neighbors with some concerns. All of those are going to be part of the public record. We have everybody's name and address on file and, and we are grateful that they submitted those comments. So with that, I'll turn it over to Select Board members with any questions that you have. Paul.
So just the, the hours of operation and when the last call is on the patio?
Yeah. So right now it would mirror our hours of operation. We are open for dinner Wednesday through Sunday, starting at five, serving until eight o'clock on Wednesday's 8:30, Thursday, nine o'clock on Friday and Saturday and eight o'clock on Sunday. We're open for lunch Saturday, or I'm sorry, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, noon to, to 4:30.
And when would last call be? So what would the?
Well, last call would be, the last seating would be when prior to 15 minutes prior to the kitchen closing. So, so if someone were to show up, you know, on Wednesday at 7:45, we could, we could seat them. And then it would just be, you know, we typically it's an hour to two hours max dining.
Okay.
Your question?
Yes, yes.
Thank you for the presentation, Ron. Also, you've blown my mind with your logo. I'm so embarrassed. I didn't realize what that symbolized and I live right near West Corner. So I love the logo symbolism. My question is more about if you have opinions on the acoustics and how noise travels within the patio. I love the setup. It looks really classy. I know that there are some neighbors that are worried about trying to go to bed and the noise kind of filtering up to their homes. Do you have any opinions on the noise in terms of if it's contained within the patio or, you know, just the acoustics, I guess, of the space?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm certainly not an acoustic expert. We've taken great pains to be sensitive to that. I know that you know, there are a lot of ambient noises here in town and, and whether it's the street to 28, which is rather loud, our, our exhaust system on the roof that runs while the kitchen is open. So I believe the sort of the conversation and laughter you hear on the patio is muffled quite well by, you know, those background noises as well as the water feature and the little bit of, of jazz music that's playing.
Jack and then Corey.
Just a couple of clarifications of the licensing issues. Typically, liquor license will, will have certain hours that you're allowed to operate. So what, what are those hours? And what are the, and music, of course, means live entertainment. So what are the existing hours that this is allowed for both?
Yeah, well, thank you for the question. It would, it's not the type of patio that would just be for drinking. So it would be coincided, coincide with a meal. So you know, our experience this past year, dining was done by no later than 10 o'clock and, and, you know, maybe 10:30 on the weekends and by that time we shut the music off and it's, it's lights out. But I think our liquor license for indoor is till one o'clock, but it's, it, it's not the type of restaurant we are. We've never went for the late night crowd. You know, we're really a family oriented, you know, dining room.
And the live entertainment license?
Yeah, we have yet to use it.
Well, what is the hours on that if you were to use it?
I don't have that in front of me. I think it has to end before midnight. But this is not for outdoor entertainment. I believe it's for indoor entertainment.
So you don't know the answer?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Corey?
Yeah, I just, I mean, so you do have music outside currently. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes.
When you had the patio, okay. So I think that's one question we have to answer because, I mean, I know in, in previous discussions, there's like an outdoor entertainment license for, for such a thing. So, you know, I, I think that's something that we kind of have to clarify. You know, and you might have to go through a separate process for that. And, and I think it's important to, you know, be sure you have that before you, you start playing music outside. But I do, I think what I would like to hear, and I think it would be helpful for the community, is kind of what Paul was getting at. And I certainly respect that you're saying that we're a restaurant, we're not a bar, and that's a very different thing. But having a hard, a structural cutoff would, would I think make me feel a little more comfortable to say, listen, you know, the patio is going to be closed at 10 o'clock or 10:30. I mean, the idea of last call is, hey, you know, the bar closes at 9:30 and that's it. I think if we had an answer to that, that was very, very, you know, clear, it would make us all a lot more comfortable. Can you provide that?
So typically, yeah, the patio would be closed by 10:30 PM on the weekends.
How about during the week?
No later than 9:30.
Corey, do you have, are you, are you set for now? I just have a couple of questions in terms of the, you know, as you know, we just discussed extending the outdoor permitting through this year. So or through the emergency declaration plus 60 days, which I think would at least carry you through this summer and probably fall at the very least. So I'm sort of in the place where you, you have the ability to continue with the outdoor patio, patio seating and, and you know, I wonder if maybe we address a permanent change after, after we get through this time period and as a, as another test run, I could be talked out of it by my colleagues, but that's sort of where my thinking is at, that right now you do have the ability to have an outdoor patio based on the license that we approved in December and the, and the current state of emergency. I also have some concerns with music and I guess it's ambient music outside, but I, I would be very hesitant to have any live music just because of the neighbors outside. And I certainly understand, you know, just the, how tight it is. And, and in fact, it's actually sort of a cove, which is, which is a nice space. And the other concern I have with, with extending this on a permanent basis is that the current license is for 120 people and this would be adding plus 32, which is another 30%. And I, and we all know that there is a parking issues. I believe you certainly have enough parking spots, but you know, I would, right now in COVID world, you are limited to your indoor seating. As you said, it's more like 50 or 60, 50%, I think, just based on the six foot. But I, I think if I were going to extend this on a, on a, on a permanent basis, I would want to consider the capacity and maybe keeping the capacity somewhere around where it is, 120 with 30 outside and 90 inside or whatever. And, and and I'm, I'm a fan of your restaurant. I, I love it. It's right down the street from me as well. So I'm hoping we can work something out that, that makes sense. Because you've been a great member of the community and we all are completely appreciative of the, the challenges that everybody's facing right now. So Jack, your hands, is it up from before and you haven't put it down? Or do you have another question?
Just kind of a follow-up on the liquor licenses, one o'clock liquor license. So if we increase the capacity, we're increasing the capacity of a, of a, of an establishment that has the right to serve liquor until one o'clock.
Right.
Not sure about the music and I, and I see Attorney Lampke is here and I thought he might want to address, you know, those issues because we might be inadvertently creating a permanent one o'clock full liquor license with the ability to have entertainment. And I like the restaurant. I, I eat there quite frequently. I think food's good. I think you guys have done a good job with that. But for public policy, we want to know what the implications are. And if Attorney Lampke, if you could address that, that would be helpful.
And if I could, Jim, before you speak, excuse me, maybe just enhance Jack's comment a little bit, which is, you know, would we, if, if we were to, if we were to consider permanently expanding the, the patio, the outdoor dining for this, could we set a different set of parameters for that such that it would have to, you know, the last serve, you know, the last seating would have to be by X o'clock. And, you know, after that time period, all service would have to be indoors. So basically a condition.
Thank you. You, you do have some options. You have to keep in mind though, that under the current state law, they have a right to serve liquor until 11 PM. The hours from 11 until two are within the province of the board. That's for the liquor license. However, for the common vitular license and for the entertainment license, you can also impose conditions that aren't subject to those flexibility that, that the liquor law has. So you, you could, for the common vitular license, authorize it for up to a certain hour. And I'm just throwing out an hour as, as an example. You could say up until 9:30 or 10 o'clock and that, that at a certain hour, the patio must be cleared. So that would effectively limit it. Plus the operator can agree to limit the occupancy of, of the patio to close at certain times. And a lot of that relies on the, the good faith of the operator. And certainly Mr. Vale, you know, has been an active member of the community and presumably he would, you know, want to honor his agreement with the town that he would not use the patio after certain time and certain hours. Similarly, with the entertainment license, you could limit the hours of that independent of the range of hours for the alcohol.
Okay. Corey?
Yeah, just some thoughts on, on, you know, whether or not this is the right time to do it. I mean, I'm hesitant to kind of kick this can down the road. I think, you know, we're all here. We've had a lot of public comment. I can't see things substantively change, substantively changing six or nine months from now. And I do think, you know, a little bit of predictability goes a long way when it comes to restaurant staffing and those kinds of things. You know, I'm encouraged by, by what Attorney Lampke say. I'm encouraged by what, what Mr. Vale said regarding, you know, working out some, some pretty reasonable times. So, you know, I think I lean more towards, you know, trying to move this forward today. Sorry.
Okay, Ari?
Yeah, I echo that and I'm sympathetic to a lot, you know, what neighbors are saying about this, but I also do think that a lot of us are craving more outdoor spaces in town and we are craving this sense of community that I think this patio can bring. And a lot of times I think that some of us in town have to bring our business to other surrounding towns like Hingham or Situate because we don't have as many of these outdoor spaces. So I think that looking for this is something that could be a really positive thing for the town. I think it could be a really positive thing for West Corner. And I, I really think that Ron and, you know, his family in the restaurant deserve to have this chance.
Okay. Jack, is your hand up from before?
Ah, no, yes, I mean, yes, it is.
So
Now it's not.
I just want to, I want to open it for, if, if anybody, we do have one comment from the public participating on the Zoom platform. If there's anybody else that would like to be, be heard, type your name. I see Paul. I'll get, I'll get to you before any public. Just type your name and address into the Q and A feature and Just type your name and address into the Q and A feature and we'll read those into the record. And then again, just, you know, those of you that did submit comments to us, they, they have been read by all of us and we appreciate your taking the time. Paul?
So I, I'm willing to, to again, go forward with this as well. And you know, one option may be, you know, the, the weekday nights, you know, could end at 9:30 with last call at nine. And you could do something like a weekend, Friday, Saturday at 10:30. Last call at, for alcohol would be at 10:00. Give time to finish the drinks, finish the dinner and tidy it up. So it's not loud or noisy or, you know, too much activity too late at night. That's all.
Just, just one other question, just in terms of the current restrictions that exist in this, for you, Ron, is, is, um, do you have to seat people like, can people only stay an hour and a half? So how, how would like various seedings and times work into whatever timeframe we were to say, cut it off by? I mean, I would be inclined to cut it off earlier, to be honest, in deference to the neighbors. And, and let me just say something about, about neighbors. I mean, it's, it's so hard for all of us right now, especially those of us making decisions to try to balance what we want to do, which is be supportive of as much progressive action and business support as we possibly can be. But at the same time, being mindful that a lot of residents live next to businesses and it's, or, or fields, as we've been discussing, and it is disruptive. And most people are home now, and this will change in the future, but they're home 24/7. So their home is their oasis and they have more time to neuros about the, the person, you know, putting on an addition next door or chipping ledge or clinking glasses in the village. So it's, it is really, I find it incredibly difficult to find that right balance. I know it's disappointing to somebody when we, when we make a decision that is, is not where they want to go. But, but again, it, we're, we're trying to take as much into consideration as we can. And, and my instinct is to do what I can to address some of the neighbors' concerns. So I would, I would like to, you know, say that last seating is X time that makes sense for a last call. And, and so my question is basically like, is it an hour and a half that somebody considered a table? Or how does that work?
Yeah, right. Thank you for the question. Right now, I believe it is about 90 minutes is the time limit that's set down by the state. I don't think that's changed. I, I, I would be amenable to a different time to close the patio or have a last seating on that patio in order to, and maybe a time, another time to cut off the music and another time to clear the patio if that would help. But to have resolution on this is important to us because it does help us do better planning for the future.
Jack, your hands up?
Yeah, as much as I support the restaurant, a couple of points. Number one, we're, we're seeing this increasingly as a result of a temporary once in a lifetime emergency. Things have changed. It's always a very bad idea to make permanent changes on the basis of temporary challenges, no matter how difficult those challenges are. So continuing as they're doing now, I think perhaps makes some sense. I'm also looking at, you know, a kind of a lack of planning and information about when is the liquor license? It can go to 12. The successor owner of the restaurant could go to 12. Or they could change it. There'd be another fiscal emergency. How this would work, if, if you can curtail it? We don't have an answer. And I think before you come asking for a permanent change, all these basic fundamental understanding of how a liquor license, victular license and live entertainment license, what they actually are and how they interreact. I'm, let's say I'm a little disappointed that, that we didn't have that information. It's not in the packet. How are you going to make a mistake? And a decision without basic fundamental issues. And the other issue is a story of how does a town deal with somebody who buys a restaurant or certain rights and somebody who's moved into an area? And suddenly there's an expansion here. Regulations are changed, right? Which are different, too different from when the people moved in or lived in their homes. And suddenly what they owned is not the same. And somebody who bought, after all, when you buy a restaurant in a location, you know what you bought. If you want to change it, but when the change comes at the expense of the rights of those people who also have bought homes in their area, and there is fundamental change for them. And understandably, the neighbors are always a small minority and they always get outvoted. But that's one of the principles that I think is important for government to understand, that it's not just majority rule, but it's minority rights and protection. So there's some things that really concern me. Can there be a way to move forward? And for, for Rudy to put together a plan that is fully knowledgeable about the laws and regulations? That could minimize that? I think that's possible and I would support and look to move in that direction. But as it stands now, I don't think, you know, the, the board would be serving the town or the neighbors by proceeding because we don't even know what we're voting on. Thank you.
Thanks. So two things, I'm going to ask Jen Oram because I believe she has the license specifics of, of the hours. And, and then we have, I believe, a comment from the public. I also wanted to state, just as we think about where we want to go with this, that, you know, we, we are the liquor licensing authority. We review every application in December for renewals. So, you know, if we were to pass this request for expansion of premises tonight with whatever conditions we might add to it, we would have a chance to revisit it in December. So even though it's a permanent request, it's, it's something that we would, we would get to revisit during the licensing time period. Although it is harder to take things back that you've given. So.
Would be considered a taking.
I, I just want to thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address that the specific, all of our license have standardized hours unless we specifically approve them at the time. So our current license hours on this license and the majority of the rest are the standard A, B, C, C plus the extension of our local authority, which is just, if you wanted me to read them, just so, Sluck and Creighton, I just wanted to make sure that you got your answer. Just right now, the current hours are 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM. That's the standard. People don't operate at that time, weekdays. And then Sunday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. And that gives a window for them to set parameters for their business, business models, which is Mr. Vale had reviews. But if you talk to a lot of businesses, you'll see their hours. It just allows them because you have to have those hours when you're open with the alcohol on site. The other matter, I just, which it was all right, Madam Chair, if I mess, just mentioned the other thing to go back just because I wanted to address it is capacity. I did review the site plan today and the parking on the space as was revised in 2004. Reviewed it with the building department just to confirm everything was to conformance. And so they are conforming with parking. And there are parking spaces too that are allowed on Hull Street. If they extend beyond that, you know, that, I think that goes into Hingham. But I just wanted to mention that capacity, it, it probably would be who, it would make more sense to keep it at the 120 and balance out and swap, swap off tables because of the parking. And that might be a consideration. And I did talk a bit to John Howland, our building inspector, about that today. And that obviously that the music, as Sluck and Creighton mentioned, that there would be need a permit for that for outside. We will, if, if the board should go move forward, that we would want to permit that music as well. So those are just a few notes I made.
And if you could just hang on and clarify, because that is a follow-up question I have, which is the entertainment license. Currently, it's only for inside.
Correct. And so the license I did review the, while you were all speaking, I reviewed the entertainment license. And it's, it's a generic entertainment license for inside Monday through Saturday, no Sunday. And there aren't any hours because it runs and it's for live recorded and live and recorded music. So we could, the board could, he could just file for an extension of the existing entertainment for the outdoor, like it was pointed out for specific hours and certain types. So you could actually condition that as well. So there's a lot of abilities to condition timeframes, capacity, et cetera, with the board.
Okay. So just for clarification and then we'll take the, I think there's one other final public comment. Just for clarification. If we were to approve an extension of premises and condition it with victular hours, where food service, if Mr. Vale wanted to have any kind of entertainment on the patio, that would be a separate license that we would address at a separate time?
Correct.
Does that make sense, everybody? Okay, great. Carrie?
Yeah, sorry. I'm trying to keep up with the comments here. First of all, we have John and Francis Gabriel from Three Mendel Road saying, "We have several dining establishments in Cohasset with outdoor seating adjacent to residential areas. Do the other restaurants have different restrictions for their outdoor space? Those restaurants also have residents within close proximity. I am firmly in support of the patio, which would be a much needed asset to our community." And then we have Mary Fran Olson from 800 Jerusalem saying that she is supportive of time restrictions that we were talking about. Dan Leahy, I know from Forest Ave, I forget the number, Dan, that you're on, but arguing that this is a valuable asset, a credible and long-term business owner. Postponing a decision would be harmful. He believes we should approve the license with mutual reasonable limitations. And then we might have a couple more comments coming in, but I'll, I'll wait for those.
Okay, Corey?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Ron, after the pandemic is over, not if, when, the, would your plan be to shift those tables, you know, close down the interior and shift those outsides? So you have maximum patio space. So how do you, how do you think you'll approach the, the capacity question?
Yes, I, I think the patio space will be what's in demand over those warmer months. But I, you know, if, if we're, to a degree, the, the restaurant is self-regulating in the sense that I don't want to do more, you know, than we can handle in, in a, in a, you know, we can handle well. The parking lot, when that is full, people typically drive by anyway. They don't stop. I hear it all the time. Oh, you guys look too busy. We're not coming in. And yet, you know, half the restaurant is empty. So I can't control how people drive, whether it's, you know, one person, one car or four people in one car. I don't know if that answers really the, the question, but.
I mean, the first thing you said, which is, you know, and I think naturally, I, I think your instinct is, is on here, which is, you know, people would rather sit outside. So, you know, if you do have that capacity question, obviously you can't have both. And I certainly think your point about you can only do so much business is a very good one. So, you know, understanding that you have that limitation and so you'll have some tables that are outside, not inside, seems to make a lot of sense to me. And, you know, I guess the only other thing would be, you know, I think like the, the chair said, just figuring out the times, I think is kind of the next, the next question for me.
Okay. Carrie, any final comments from the public?
Nope, I don't see anymore.
Okay. It just popped up.
Hold on, hold on.
Not usually this committee.
Okay.
It's a public hearing.
Hold on, a very detailed bullet pointed argument from John Gabriel. I'm trying to read to summarize. Uh, he disagrees that the statement or the, the application is missing information. Mr. Vale has shown flexibility addressing concerns when you buy a house next to a restaurant. Many property owners should expect this. John Gabriel is in full favor of, of moving forward with this, I can tell. Thank you, John, for all those comments, trying to summarize. Maureen McCarthy commenting, she grew up in Cohasset, has dined at Corner Stop many times, dined on the, at the outdoor patio and thinks that the noise is very low. The ambient music and water features help to dull the noise as well. So both of them are in favor of this.
Okay. So I think we're going to stop there. And I, I just, I, I think talking amongst ourselves about emotion that has some, has some time factors worked into it. You know, again, I just, for, for the public, the, this, the Commonwealth allows for outdoor extensions through what I think is at least going to be the summer. So if for some reason this weren't to pass, it's, it's, I, it's not devastating. I, I think it's always something we can revisit. I, hearing my colleagues in the discussion we've had tonight, I, I do think that, you know, I, I'm more inclined to go along with a motion that sets limits to the timing. And I would not be in favor of any kind of live music, to be honest with you, outdoors. And I've been pretty consistent with that in, in some of the other licensing that we've, we've entertained in the past. But that's for another, that's for another night. I mean, is, is a 10 o'clock patio has to be cleared or 9:30? Is that even, is that reasonable? I'm asking both my, my, my colleagues and Corey and then Jack.
My first thought, I mean, in one direction, it seems, you know, pretty reasonable to say for, for 10. But I'm also considering this, you know, from the resident point of view where, hey, we're, you know, if you've got kids and you try to get dinner, you know, if the patio goes to 10, that may mean if, if you're applying the 90 minute rule, you have to be seated by 8:30. That may be a little, little tough, you know, and, and I, you know, I do think there are residents that have, you know, schedules which may not allow them to get to a restaurant until, you know, 8:45 or maybe 9 o'clock. So I, I'm just considering that in my head as well. I don't necessarily have an answer to it, but.
Yep. Jack?
Well, I guess my feeling is that if you're going to go forward and it, I think there's a majority of the board that is, does want to go forward. And I'm not necessarily opposed, but I'd like to see a better thought out plan. This has all been thrown to us. We've heard the, the discussion at the public meetings, shown the purpose. So we, to craft a plan of what is the hours for the outside? Is this a permanent increase in seated capacity? Or is this a temporary increase and part of the, part of it goes outside, but we don't increase? We don't increase, you know, the, the number of people allowed in there? It's always important to understand in all these things. And I did a lot of this stuff in, in Boston. I've been in innumerable licensing hearings representing neighborhoods, by the way, as a president of a neighborhood association for 10, 15 years. So when you grant something, it becomes permanent. And you're not necessarily giving it to Rudy, and they run a great restaurant. But let's say he sells it and the person who buys it isn't as good as Rudy, gets a little financial challenge, kind of lowers the standards to cram people in there. And we're stuck with a licensed premises for that. With that capacity, that's much more than Rudy would ever fill it to, but the successor and interest can. So I guess there are enough of these types of particulars that I'm, I'm sure Attorney Lampke is well, well versed in these little, little details that can make a difference. So I still would say that we would be better off crafting this and tightening it up, understanding what we're approving and understanding what we're approving is a permanent thing that will go down to the next owner of the restaurant. We hope Rudy stays there until he's old and gray. Let me look, Rudy, you're not even gray yet, but we hope he will be here, but he may not. So we don't want to set a permanent standard here. So that's my thoughts.
Corey, I'm going to give you the last word and then hopefully. Corey, I'm gonna give you the last word and then hopefully we'll either move on with a motion or continue into the hearing.
And thank you, everyone, for your patience with me, especially here. A quick question for Attorney Lampke for the particular, that license, my apologies. Does that restrict? I, I'm trying to determine, understand the distinction between like serving, is that placing an order or is that delivering the food? You know, so, so if we say, you know, we're gonna give extended outdoor premises and have a 9:30 limit on the particular license, I'll get it eventually. What does that practically mean for the restaurant?
An easy term to use is CV license, common victula.
Thank you.
That's trouble with victula. You should look at the different spellings of it. You, you can set the time period as, by which the food service needs to end and people need to be out of that area. So again, just throwing out times, you, you could say the, the patio must be cleared by 10:00 PM. And that would give them the opportunity to take, take seatings until a certain time. People will have to make orders and it's up to them to try to coordinate that so that they're out by 10 o'clock. That's a different time for the CV license than the interior. But you can set a different time for the exterior patio area for the common victor CV license. I, I hope that answers your question, Corey.
That does. That was perfect. Thank you. I think we've lost our chair again.
Diane, I was actually gonna just ask Ron if you wouldn't mind responding to this in terms of the hours.
Am I back?
Uh, you're almost back Diane, but I'm gonna let Ron respond real quick. Any response to this in terms of what you think could work for you, Ron? You know, what do you think about the hour discussion that we're having?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with listening to, to what you might suggest. You know, I think this past summer, we tried to limit the times of the seating out on the patio, which seemed to work well. Trying to take into consideration our neighbors and of course, I, I, I'm surprised you wouldn't be able to re-regulate this with, if, if we were to sell with a new owner, I'm, I would be surprised you wouldn't be able to do that. But certainly we would be, you know, certainly we would, we would like to hear what you would have to say, but I think if we stop seating by eight or 8:30. You know, and then clear the patio by 10, you know, I'd, I'd have no problem with that.
Okay, Attorney Lampke, do you have a response? I see your hand.
Yeah, yeah, I just lost you. Hold on a second.
We can hear you.
Okay, on the point of transferring the license and being able to make changes. Typically with the alcohol license, you, those licenses transfer with the conditions that they were last set at. Unless there is some type of good cause to lower the hours or make other changes. Licenses, you have more flexibility with if you have a new operator, because those are typically new licenses. With an alcohol license is an automatic renewal unless the local licensing authority schedules a, a hearing to, to change the, the liquor license. But a lot of boards vote by habit on renewing them. But even if they didn't vote, they would be automatically renewed. But the common victula license and the entertainment license, if there's a problem, there's more flexibility with it. And certainly the common victula is the, you know, very open license for changes.
Okay, Diane, you're back. I think I see more comments coming in. Welcome back.
Right, and I just, just, I really do want to suspend, you know, at some point unless there's somebody saying something new. I, I would prefer not to take any additional public comment. And, you know, just one thing I would, would request in any motion that anybody wanted to make would be that we keep the capacity at 120, which is what they're licensed for. So that if there's 30 people on the patio, there's only 90 people inside. And, and I think given what Mr. Vale said earlier in the meeting about the, the distancing of six, you know, feet between people, that'll certainly work. You know, I don't, I don't think we're gonna be stopping people from coming in if we keep the capacity at 120. I don't think it makes sense to do it to 150, that's for sure. Corey?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make a motion on this if the chair is, is asking for one.
I just wanna, just unless Carrie, there's something new in the comments. I would like to move on.
It's mostly the same thing, so I think we can.
Great, thank you all for your comments. We, we can read them all and I, I appreciate your patience with us. Corey?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that the board approve the application for the alteration of premises for the corner stop eatery to include a permanent patio space with eight tables accommodating up to 32 guests. With the stipulation that total capacity for the restaurant, including indoor and outdoor dining, does not exceed the 120 persons that is currently permitted. I would also add to those limitations under this CV limitations, which would include a clearing out of the patio at, by 10:00 PM on Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday evenings.
Is there a second? Okay, any other comments?
All right, yes.
Good roll call. All right, Jack?
Yeah, I would be prepared to support it at 120, as long as there's no increase in capacity. The only thing I would say is, is that 11 o'clock is, is way too late. Think the neighbors would have a, a reason to be concerned. And I, and I think that probably I'd like to have the patio cleared at 9:30. And if I, if that were to be across the board, then I'd be glad to support this.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second.
And then I'd like to amend, I'd like to amend the, the motion that the hours be patio cleared by 9:30 Monday through Sunday.
Is there a second on the amendment, on the amended motion?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. So we're gonna vote on the amendment.
Yeah, and not the whole motion, right?
Yeah, okay, so we're, we're now voting on the amendment to change the, the, the hours of the patio so that the, the patio would be cleared all seven nights of the week by 9:30 PM. So we have a motion in a second, so if there's any comments, otherwise we'll go to a vote. Okay?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, nay.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, no.
Okay, the motion carries, so the, the original motion, get Paul Schubert, help me out if I mess this up. So the original motion has now been.
On the floor.
Right.
And the amendment has modified the original motion for 9:30 clearance.
That's right. So the amendment now is, is.
I would like to make amendment to extend or to change the weekend service to 10:30 instead of 9:30 and by weekend, I mean Friday night and Saturday night.
So we haven't. We, we have an amendment.
I'm just throwing it out, Corey, how about 10?
If, if I could just have the floor for a minute, just so I can clarify and make sure everybody is on the same page. Corey has made an amendment that on Friday and Saturday nights, the closing of the patio or people would have to leave by 10:30. Is that your motion, Corey? Just confirming that. Okay. Is there a second? Okay, there is a second on that motion. So, all right, we'll do a roll call again. This would be just for the Friday and Saturday nights, the patio would be allowed to be open until 10:30. So, okay, roll call, please.
Hold your seatbelts, Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Okay, so now we're gonna go back to the main motion, which has now been amended. This is for extension of premises with the capacity remaining at 120. The patio on, let's see, Monday through Thursday or Sunday through Thursday is allowed, is open till 9:30 and on Friday and Saturday till 10:30.
Correct.
Got that right? Okay, Jim, Attorney Lampke, am I, I think we're good? Do you follow that? Great. Okay, we will do a roll call, beginning with Jack.
Uh, Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
All right, if you follow that, Ron, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We look forward to dining with you soon.
Look forward to it as well. Thank you very much.
Nice to know I won't need to have a food taster next time I eat there.
Absolutely.
Jen, did you get that?
Food taster or the?
I'm going to Tracy for that motion.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, she's good at it. All right, thank you all for your patience and that. That is government deliberations at its best. Paul Schubert, your hands up.
Yeah, so a quick thing. So the entertainment license will be handled in a separate situation, separate meeting.
Yeah, should there, should they decide they want outdoor entertainment, that would be handled separately with a different application. Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we're a little off course, but we accomplished a lot. Thank you all, thank you to the public for your patience as well. And thank you to.
Can we close the, the meeting? Close the hearing?
Oh, thank you, yes. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thanks. All right, we're gonna do a roll call on closing the hearing.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Okay, and then before we leave, leave and move on to the next agenda item, Attorney Lampke has his hand up.
Yes, thank you. I just want to check, did you want me to stay for anything further or we concluded with what's needed for my attendance?
We are concluded with what's needed from your attendance. Thank you very much for being here.
My pleasure. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, next up is an update. Thank you, Tanya Bodell, who's Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee. Thank you for your patience. I thought we might be 15, 20 minutes off schedule, but we're a little more than that, so. Welcome, I'll turn the floor over to you.
No problem. Thank you. This is our first quarter 2021 update on the Alternative Energy Committee. We're going to share our screen, do a presentation, run through it very quickly. I'd really like to focus on some new initiatives for this year that we would like your permission to proceed with or some guidance or discussion on how to do that. So we're going to give a quick update on some of the ongoing initiatives that you may be wondering what is going on with that. And then we will move to some of our new initiatives and get some feedback from you and, and at least one case, permission to proceed. So I'm going to share my screen. And. Oh my, okay, I'm gonna try this one more time. I'm canceling, I'm gonna share my screen. There we go. All right. Here we go. All right, so update on existing initiatives, new initiatives, next steps. 2021 is turning out to be very much a focus on education and helping benefits to town residents and businesses. Not just through lower cost to the town itself and its municipal load, but with some of the new initiatives that are underway. Luckily, this is part of our mission. And so we are under our mission to investigate community-wide residential and business opportunities and contribute to public awareness and education on town initiatives and long-term benefits that can be achieved. So we have been moving towards that in 2021, but that said, since it is a move, we would like to discuss it with you, get some guidance on what you'd like us to focus on while we're still moving forward with some of our other initiatives carrying over from 2020. I'm gonna go past our team, except to say it is the most active, amazing committee I think I've ever had the pleasure of leading. And we have a lot of liaisons from other committees which make it very valuable as we start to look at some of the multi-disciplined aspects of these programs. So kudos to this team and everybody is very active and I've received lots of compliments on that as well.
And that is not hyperbole.
It is. If you're interested in being on our committee, which we're right now full, plan on, plan on being involved in.
Up in your game.
Okay, what is going on with our Community Choice Aggregation Program? This plan was approved last year during town meeting. We expected by fall that people would have the choice of getting either lower cost energy or higher renewable energy or both. And we are stuck in Department of Public Utility limbo. This is just discouraging in some cases, but we're not alone. The Department of Public Utilities, because of COVID, has gotten bogged down because of some of the action going on at the state. We are waiting for the DPU to approve our plan and as we've said, we're not alone. So there are other towns, including our partners, that are waiting for that approval. We've talked about maybe writing some letter, trying to put on political pressure. At this point, good energy doesn't feel like we should do that, so we just have to be patient, which is not my strong suit. So winter 2021, hopefully people will be able to choose and by 2022 or, or the end of this year, start to receive. So are there any questions on this one? This is, like I said, I think it's partly COVID and just regulatory morass.
Okay, I have, I have a quick one and just, I think it's just, it's something you've, you've discussed before, but I think every time you bring this up, it's really important just to remind people. You know, if we do go through with this, the community doesn't have to go along with it. They can, it would just add an additional choice. It won't force the community to do anything. Is that correct?
By law, this program is a opt-out program. But if Cohasset residents or businesses don't want to take what's the default choice, which would be chosen by you, the select board, once we put out the bids, then they can choose to pull out at any time with no penalty. All right, next, $150,000 study grant for two town sites for potential microgrids is well underway and starting to wrap up. We have about six months of great analysis by GE Consulting, sponsored by Mass CEC. So we're looking forward to this. What they have found, perhaps no surprise to many, is our lowest cost option for resiliency is having the gas diesel backup, which we already have, complemented by solar, which we currently don't have, but we're trying to get. And batteries, which are great, are the more expensive option. That said, there's lots of money for batteries, so we have asked them to provide an estimate of what the incremental cost would be to move forward with a more renewable battery type of approach, which is more resilient, has more reliability. And, and we could still have diesel as backup, but try to minimize the use of that. And our goal would be to take that price differential and go to federal funding and grants, which there are plenty, and ask them to cover that cost. So we are not looking to impose greater costs on the town, but we have asked them to give us the tools that we would need to go ask for grant money to be able to move forward with higher reliability and resiliency that pays for itself and does not impose an incremental cost. Along the lines of the microgrids, for those of you who have attended our Microgrid Mondays, they, if you recall, you gave us permission to proceed with these. These are, these were fabulous. And Brianna Bennett, who is the intern supporting our committee, was absolutely amazing. She just took this ball and ran with it. We had. We had more than 50 unique viewers. And for any of you who missed it, you can go on to the AEC portion of the town website, click on the YouTube either here, we will post this presentation, or on our website and go listen along. And Paul Schubert, yours was one of my favorites. I just, I felt like you, Steve and Dave just did such a nice job bringing it home to the real world, so thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Your microgrid, nano-grid with us. We were able to forge stronger relationships with entities that give money, entities that are in the industry. So the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center helped to advertise our Microgrid Mondays. And we also teamed up with NICA, the Northeast Energy Commerce Association, NEWE, New England Women in Energy and the Environment, and MAPS, which is very focused on municipalities. So open lines of communication and collaboration is our strategy to move forward with reliability and resiliency in alternative energy for the town. And our existing solar energy arrays keep on bringing us savings. We now have more than 2,000 kilowatt hours that have been produced and the savings are almost at $200,000 in total. So we are looking to expand this, as you know, with more solar sites. And those negotiations are underway, we have not yet signed a power purchase agreement. To do that, we need to come to you and the school committee with some of the general terms about what we'd be looking forward to doing. And there's been a couple of breakthroughs on this. We continue to have Palmer Capital, Select and Amarausco working with us. Amarausco has designed school carports, taken into account some of the feedback from the schools and we're ready to present to them. We've kept putting this on hold until the school's reopening was underway, but we are now ready to present in April and May, I believe we're on the agenda going forward. So thanks to our school committee liaisons, we're ready to present on the carports. The other thing is the school roofs, I think we may have mentioned. We are tracking that down as an option, those offer greater savings, they have less aesthetic negativity for some of the committee members to put them on the roofs. And frankly, it would be a better option for us from the pricing that we received. We have talked to the state, specifically Michelle Leary has reached it out to the state and Susan at the school has put in an official request to see if we could hasten our roof replacement and still have the state fund 40% to 60% of the roof replacement for purposes of being able to put on solar arrays. The, there's a cost, obviously, the town has to still come up with their share earlier. So there's a time value of money that is a cost, but that we believe would be more than offset by the savings associated with being able to move forward with the school roofs. So we are researching this before we completely write off the roofs. It's not a done deal yet, but it is a possibility, so we're looking at that. And as far as the water plant is concerned, we're still in the design stage, but we're trying to hasten that along to get a feel for what we could do next to the water plant. Quick, we're stuck here because this is, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, just a quick question and Chris, I don't know if you need to pop in. Are either of these teed up for a town meeting? So like the roof, the water department being one site and then the school roofs, do you anticipate that would be like spring town, I mean fall town meeting, special town meeting?
School roofs are already approved, so we don't have to go to the town for the school roofs.
I'm talking about, yeah, the actual project, though, we would, because we would have to commit to redoing the school roofs. Even though they're an approved site for the solar, the town would have to make a commitment to the funding for the new roofs. Is that correct, Chris?
Well, it's, the, there is a pathway to fund the replacement on an accelerated basis with the state, which is being explored now, and tie a solar project into that. So the answer is, the answer to your question is, Diane, yes. And it would be kind of a package thing that would come to the town, hopefully with the endorsement of MSBA and some funding and all of that. Yeah, there is actually a, because one of the concerns that had come up was that the roofs weren't quite there, they've extended the useful life. It turns out that a way around that, that the state has put in for green energy projects, which is awesome. So I know Michelle Leary is working with the schools and with MSBA to look into that, to see if we can take advantage of it.
Want to try to make sure we have some sense of it. Am I falling away?
Yeah, you know you're back, I think you're back. Are you back? Yes.
There's two of you.
Not known until the summer.
Sorry, Tanya. Diane's having technical difficulties, Chris, do you want to finish that thought?
Yeah, I think. I'm getting, we're getting a little echo effect here. The. Let's see if we can fix, is that better?
I think we need to mute.
Give me just a second here, was that better? Okay, it's fixed. So basically, the answer is yes to Diane's question. Something would come back in the future, hopefully as a package deal with a roof project, some funding and a green energy, in this case, a solar project, which I think is the answer to the question.
Yes. Any other questions about the solar arrays?
I don't see any, Tanya, you can continue.
Okay, good, so we're moving forward with that. And we have a little bit of breathing room because of the extension of the investment tax credit at the federal level, but we are cognizant of the state incentives ratcheting down, so we still need to move forward quickly. As you know, we received so many bids for solar that we are exploring community solar. And what we have learned is Amarausco, one of our chosen award winners, has done community solar in other towns in Massachusetts. What that means is it's good for them if the town takes at least half of the energy from the site. And then if there's a low-income housing component to it, they can take a portion and then we could sign up individual residents who might want to have local renewable energy located in town that they would then purchase directly. This would not preclude a community aggregation program. It would be a separate program that could be done together. And so this basically is buying credits and this is something that we are pursuing to be able to get as much solar built as possible within the physical borders of the town while also bringing savings and options to people in town. And I think if there's any concern about pursuing the community solar, we've really been focused on the municipal purchases, but we're now starting to see that some of them are synergistic. So we're in a parallel path pursuing that, as long as that's okay with you, we'll just continue to do that.
Yep, yep, can't tell if Diane is back or not, keep going.
Okay, so now here are the new initiatives. Then you'll see a theme very focused on education of residents, businesses on green energy, clean energy and opportunities. So we have, as we identified in December, we have 20 charging ports, so five different locations. And I think it's around four ports each, two charging stations at those five locations, two ports each. And we, as Chris Senior noted, indicated last week, we've never officially opened them. We've never done a ribbon-cutting ceremony. And I think that this might be something we would want to consider doing for Earth Day. We could combine it with more, I know Earth Day is coming up very quickly. We could combine it with more, we could do an electric vehicle parade, this would serve a couple of purposes. Showcasing EVs and PHVs, registration, registration, so we know who has them, which we're still trying to figure out. Parade through town, maybe we have some dealers park some beautiful electric vehicles at the ribbon-cutting event, have a map online for sure, we should have that, I think we might, paper map, other. So this is something based on the conversation Chris and I had last week. We are ready as a committee to move forward with doing something like this for Earth Day or other. So we're looking for guidance from you on what you think we should do with respect to the charging stations.
Wonderful, okay. Are there any questions for Tanya on this issue? Diane, I know you're trying to come back.
Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry.
Lost Tanya in the middle of the Q and A.
And then Tanya just disappeared, we're trying, we're trying. We were just finishing the slide about charging stations and.
Someone comes in, someone has to go out, it's like, it's like, it's like Survivor here, so.
Corey, question, yeah.
So I had a quick chat with Tanya yesterday regarding the EV thing. I like the idea of having, you know, making it official that these are live, because they kind of, they kind of, you know, were installed kind of in progression. There's a bunch around town, I think it's a huge part, you know, I think it can also be wrapped into economic development. Come visit downtown, we have some chargers, you know, so I do think having some sort of educational event around Earth Day makes a lot of sense. One thing that was in my head was maybe we get some of the, you know, local, you know, electrical vehicle enthusiasts around, maybe in the back parking lot behind the library, we invite some, you know, if we can get a couple of local dealers to give us some of their time to show some new models, just to kind of be educational. I also think that, you know, what Tanya is doing and this whole push, you know, I was in a, I was invited to sit in on an earlier meeting a few weeks ago with the Hingham League of Women Voters and what's about climate change and what's really clear is, I mean, we are on the front lines of this. You know, we are on the front lines of climate change, we literally have flooding and issues coming, hitting our shores every day. And us taking the lead on this, I think, is really where we need to be. So, you know, any type of educational program we can do, I think, is a great, great kind of step forward. Tanya, welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Corey.
So are we okay, would people like to see this for Earth Day? Would we like to do it on another day? I looked at Chris and all of you, because we'd like you to have the big scissors, cutting the ribbon and giving remarks.
I would absolutely be open to that, I think, Dr. Schubert, Paul, you have a point, I know you're one of these vehicle enthusiasts, Paul.
Oh yeah, I mean, I can't stand up about how unbelievably reliable, safe and really enjoyable our to drive. In addition, I think cutting the ribbon, you know, we spent probably the last five years getting these, this part of the infrastructure of the town built out, a lot of it was state donation and state grants and monies that came from clean initiatives. And I think we should put that out there, say, look, we are not doing this all of a sudden, this has been ongoing for several years. We've had a fleet of electric vehicles in the town, which have saved an awful lot of just money in maintenance. And yeah, I mean, even a EV enthusiast in the back lot of the library, I, you know, I always found it for that. But I think certainly the, the cutting, you know, that would be, because I think people should know what the towns are doing, that's all.
All right. So if I could get sharing rights again, because the next one is new, and so I want to give it some justice.
There I am.
By the way, just to jump on that point, so we have, Earth Day is the 24th, Arbor Day is the 30th, we're looking to event, it's already an Earth Day, we're looking to an Arbor Day event on the 30th, which is a Friday, with some tree planting, which we'll invite all of you to as well, so maybe in between those two, or maybe as part of that weekend, we can do this, you know, green charging station celebration and also, as Tanya said, highlight vehicles. We actually have three of the Nissans that we have on a green energy grant. And I know that there's the Teslas and there's a number of other vehicles that are out there, so we're happy to, we'll turn it, we'll build something and report back to the board on sometimes.
Let's know, we're ready to go.
That sounds great, I'm back.
Diane, you're freezing again.
Okay.
All right, all right. Sorry, Tanya, I'm trying to get the echo gone. All right, Tanya, you should be able to talk again, go ahead.
So this is new, in January at our meeting, Diane Kennedy was attending, the committee voted to explore what we as a town might do instead of solarized plus. Massachusetts for the last five years or so has had a solarized program, then they turned it into solarized plus. The objective is to get towns to help people within the towns understand what the options are. And there was some paid money for marketing, but it was only $1,500, a couple thousand dollars, it wasn't a lot. And some of the requirements were just intimidating, frankly. So we voted to have Debbie, Steve and Pat explore what alternatives we might do. They reached out to Marshfield and Situate to see what they are doing. And as part of that outreach, they started talking about what a program could look like for our towns. They came back and reported that, obviously, solarized plus is not an option, but something that's like go-electric. This is just not an official anything, I mean, this is just an illustration. But it'd be a customized program with the surrounding towns, like Situate and Marshfield. The purpose is twofold, education, allowing vendors who provide electrification, heat pumps, solar energy, batteries, electric vehicle charging, electric vehicles, you know, all these things that are starting to electrify to give them a platform without any liability for the town or any preference by the town, but just an opportunity for them to help us educate residents and businesses about decisions on converting to economic and efficient energy resources. The other option would be by teaming up with Situate and Marshfield, hopefully we could get some discounts through sort of a bulk access point. So this is the concept, Debbie Cook has done an amazing job helping to think through what this might look like. It is still exploratory, there is no program in place, it would have to be a co-hasset-centric or a joint-community type of program that gets developed. Before we put more effort into this, we just wanted to raise it with you and see how you felt, what concerns you might have, what we should stay away from, what we should try to do and take it from there. So I open up the discussion because this is something new. I think some knew we were pursuing this, but we're now at a point where we either have to start helping to develop the program or pull back.
So, can I, can I be heard?
Yep, you're back.
On my phone, hopefully that'll be a little bit better. So my, my initial instinct, Tanya, is I would love to have a little more time to kind of digest since this, you know, we're just hearing about this now and so I can, we can formulate questions. You know, one, I guess one thing I would want clarification on, it doesn't have to be now, is, is this really a community effort or is it a municipal effort? And in which case, what resources, people do we deploy? You know, so, you know, like with aggregation, even though there's, there's, a lot of it is an individual community initiative and savings as opposed to a full-on municipal project. So just drawing some clarifications for that, I'm all for any, you know, multi-community efforts. But, you know, should it be something that the actual municipality needs to get involved in, then, you know, we would probably want to delegate a staff member to work with some of the volunteers on your committee. I see Corey has his hand up, so I'll let Corey have the floor.
Yeah, so on the go-electric, I see we've got Situate, Marshfield, this is something that we couldn't partner with any of the municipal light companies, we couldn't partner with Hingham or Hallon, is that correct? Or we could.
There's no prohibition on that.
Okay, and I just bring that up because I know that, I mean, Hingham Municipal Light Plant has some interesting programs already going on. I'm wondering if, you know, there's already, to the north of us or to the west of us, something to build a structure upon. But at the same time, I'm also a little concerned about the workload of the AEC, Tanya, to be honest, just because this, this is, this is a lot. And, and, you know, there are, you know, Massachusetts does have like a, you know, energy-saving program and this seems to go maybe a little bit further in a good direction, but. And this seems to go maybe a little bit further in a good direction, but, you know, is this, could this be a lot of, a lot of extra work for your committee? I don't want to burn your committee out. I also don't want to burn town staff out. How much do you think, if this gets off the ground, how much management do you think it would require?
That's a great question, and I appreciate your concern. And really, at this point, we don't know. I think we were tasked with exploring what could happen, what we could do. And there was, there was throwing around of ideas by Debbie and her team and Marshfield and Situate. But we haven't explored with Hingham and Hall. We haven't developed what exactly it would look like, what, what the costs would be, what the benefits would be. So this is just, is it worthwhile for us to continue having that committee, subcommittee of Debbie, Steve and Pat to continue the discussion with the surrounding towns to sort of flesh this out further? That's sort of the step we're looking for now. Or is that sort of too much?
And I, I, I think if I can speak for the board and, you know, start waving your hands if you disagree. I think we don't know enough to know too much. So, again, I think we're very open and excited about municipal sharing and community, multi-community efforts. So I say, keep having the discussion and maybe what we do is put on an agenda in early May, once we wrap up the warrant, a real discussion just on that. Like, send them out, get some information, come back to us, and then we can talk about, does it, is it a town initiative? Again, is it a municipal initiative or is it a community? In which case, you know, how do we parse it out and who's got the bandwidth to do what? I see Jack has his hand up.
Yeah, as, as I'm watching these things and the mailers I'm, I'm getting, I have some, I do have some concerns. I think the, our role is to find out what works for the citizens of Cohasset efficiently and in an appropriate manner running our town. But I'm beginning to see a little bit of, you know, very strong advocacy. And I'm not quite sure that town committees should be in the advocacy business. So I'm seeing a little tone and, and I think that we probably, we want to make sure that, that that we don't go become an advocacy organization. You're supposed to be a town committee, seeing how we can get alternative energy harnessed to benefit our town. So I'm not opposed, but I think that I am seeing that, and I think somebody should point it out.
So let's circle back, Tanya, maybe in a month, get, do, do some research, find out again where, where lines need to be drawn or committees need to be raised, or citizens need to be alerted, and we'll talk this through in more detail.
Okay, very good. And that makes total sense. And Jack, you're, I totally agree with you. We are not an advocacy organization, and I think we have very passionate people on the committee. Come across as advocacy, but I am personally very intent on making sure that we are bringing just the facts and the opportunities to the town.
Thank you.
I just wanted to be the Grinch that stole Christmas, that's all.
All right. I'm going to just whiz through these. This is.
Paul Schubert has a question, and then I'll let you whiz.
I mean, I'll take it on. I'll be the advocate for this. I mean, just the, the cost structure alone for electric vehicles for the town as well as my, my own personal experience the last five, now going in six years, the cost structure is just phenomenal. So I'll be an advocate because I know it's going to save a lot of people in town money. So I'll leave it at that.
Costs are going down. Things are changing. We really are in the energy industry at a incredible turning point with respect to technology, business models, economics. So we, we just want to be aware of it and make sure that the residents and businesses of the town are also aware of it. And Paul and some of the others who are aware of the cost structures will certainly can present their case. You know, there's also, I'll be honest, there's also risk. As we know, when you rely on one energy resource, you are decreasing your potential resiliency. And that diversity could come back to haunt you. In Texas, saw this. So I think we just have to be very aware of where we stand at the end of the line, bordered by the ocean, and be cognizant of what our true goals are, which is resiliency, reliability, low cost and protecting the environment.
No, I agree. And one of the things that's important is the battery technology has significantly improved. My off-grid cabin is much, much more efficient. And the price has gone down. Where, where the danger is, if you look at a lot of these, the economics previously very highly subsidized through tax credits and various other things. You know, electric vehicles are not paying for the, the highway trust fund because that's funded by gasoline taxes. There's a whole bunch of things, but I think the positive thing is it's been a lot of technological innovation because where we need to get is we need to get electric renewables to be economically positive without relying upon subsidies and, and tax credits, which they, unfortunately, in the past, have relied upon.
So I want to be mindful of the time and it's, 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 you know, we're way over. So, Tanya, I want to give you your, to let you summarize your last few slides and then we still have another. You're on mute. Still on mute.
On mute. I think.
Please let us get back to in-person meetings.
Okay, so I'm not going to share again. I'm just going to run through electric buses. We're looking at the options. We are aware that the leases expire in two years, and that may be a point at which it makes sense to go electric. So we're working with capital budget and just monitoring what the options are. We, going forward, every monthly meeting we have is going to start with a 20 to 30 minute presentation by somebody in the industry. So we heard from Highland Electric. We're looking to bring in hydrogen. Coming up, Quasar Wave up in New Hampshire is about to go live, a hydrogen facility, two and a half acres for 100 megawatts. It's just stunning, this technology, what it might be able to do. So we're going to be doing that as part of our education. Green communities, we are requesting more funding, again, $200,000 to help us with automatic temperature controls and increase our efficiency, lower the cost of the Cohasset High School, Middle School. That, if we get that 200,000, would bring our total benefit in grants from green communities up to around $840,000. So we are approaching a million dollars in grant funding from green communities. So good job Cohasset for voting us to move forward on that. We have benefited. And we're getting noticed. Tufts University is doing a study and they've asked to include us Cohasset as part of the research into why and how municipalities develop and implement climate projects. So the key message we're giving is collaboration and communication is key. You saw that we've been teaming up with industry organizations, and you may have read some of the articles in the Mariner about us. So we're just looking to continue to solve the town's energy challenges, bring it to you in an impartial way. We, the committee, don't have any authority unless you give us authority to move forward. So these quarterly meetings are very helpful to keep you in tune and to continue to keep the lines of communication open. So any final questions?
Corey has his hand up.
Yeah, theme today with me. Sorry, everybody. But I just want to say, just, you have my full support and enthusiasm about electrifying our school buses. I think if we were to lease another set of diesel buses in two years, that's just not an acceptable outcome to me. I mean, again, you know, we have our kids, diesel buses are idling there. They have maintenance, but we've got children that are literally at the exhaust level, breathing in exhaust. This is the perfect use of this technology, and, and you have my full support to attack that with as much energy as you have. And whatever I can do to assist with that, I mean, I will advocate for kids on electric buses every day of the week. So please, if I can help you with that, by all means, reach out.
Thank you. Can you complete?
I'm done.
Oh, thank you. And sorry if we rushed you through, but let's let's, let's keep in touch about that other matter. And maybe as soon as the warrant's buttoned up, we can have you back and have a fuller conversation about that specifically and give you some guidance and next steps, once we know a little more about how that might play out in, in terms of intermunicipal work. So, thank you.
We will continue to develop that further. Thank you, everybody.
Great. Thanks, everybody. So now we get to the warrant. And we're going to talk really, really fast.
Okay, so I will pop up on the screen. So the, the advisories committee started to vote. So you're getting your first send back articles tonight. And there's actually one that has a little tweet that we'll talk about, but it's a good tweet. Let me share the screen. And.
So Chris, you emailed us something. Is that, are those the ones that you're suggesting we vote on tonight?
Yeah, what I, what I emailed you was just, I usually put an informational summary up on the website. So I'm just sharing in advance with all of you, just to look at it if you have any comments on it. Some of the things we already talked about. So, so we have the unpaid bills, the advisory discussed them, they recommended by a vote of six to nothing. Does anyone have any, any questions about any of the things that we talked about last week?
No, but what I would like to do is, you know, go article by article tonight. And if the board's ready to have a motion to recommend the articles based on the input from advisory.
That's what I'll start with then. So we have, that's what, that's what you're going to talk about tonight. So.
Yep.
That's article, Article Six is the first one. So if I, it's up on the, can you see it? It's up on the screen. Advisory, not it last week. And they recommended approval by a vote of six to nothing. The only reason it wasn't eight to nothing is there were, there were two members not there. So.
Okay. Jack has a question? Jack, you're on mute.
Yeah, I noticed that there are pilt up, but I noticed there are over $3,500 of legal bills. And, you know, I had asked you a while ago, and you'd stated that there were no unpaid legal bills in the past. So where did these come from?
Well, the, the thing about an unpaid bill is that you find it after the fact. So what these, again, I don't know what happened last year. Bruce Terence has a somewhat unique method of packaging these. There's, there were two bills that there were for services that rendered in June last year, that for some reason didn't get into the processing because we go through this fairly intensely. So that popped up in conversations over the last month or so, and here it is. The other one actually dates back to Williams, and there was confusion when the firm broke up. And, and it's actually, you know, I hate to call it a receiver. I don't know quite what the term is, but it's like a dissolution agent, and, and they're just going through other old receivables. So we got hit with this, and I went back and forth with Paul for a while. And then we, we, we focused down on what it is and reached this number, which is actually two-thirds of what the original request was from the, from the, the old firm's receiver. So, yeah, these, these were not, these were not on my radar screen, and they are now. So that's the unfortunate thing about the others, too. The, normally, we're very good. We've not had an unpaid bill in a number of years. So I'm not happy about presenting these, but they did happen. So.
So you're, you're blaming Terrence's?
No, no, no. I'm not blaming anybody. I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone, Jack. I'm, at the end of the day, they were, no, I'm not blaming Paul in the slightest. You know, the, the, last year, the Deutsch Williams one was just a, that was a weird one that got broke, that got caught up in the dissolution of the firm. And it didn't become clear that there was an issue until comparatively recently, and Paul and I talked through it. And so we reached this settlement.
Well, I guess my concern is I've been asking for well over, well over a year for a list of all the attorneys that we've hired, and I've asked them, and including freedom of information requests, that I have requested for you to provide me with the authorizations for when they were hired, a complete list of all the attorneys and law firms that the town has paid. I finally got a, a box that is incomplete. So I just think that as town manager, it is your statutory responsibility to handle these differently. And I don't know why that a member of the Board of Selectmen has to repeatedly ask you to provide information that is your statutory requirement, and that it requires freedom of information for you to provide that. And I believe at this point, it's still incomplete.
Jack, so we're talking about the warrant now, and I appreciate.
I'm sorry, Diane. We're talking about the warrant, and I'm looking at a legal bill in which you were specifically told by the town manager, all past legal bills have been paid. So I don't want to bring this up, but I'm bringing it up at this point, and I'm done with this issue for now.
Thank you. Paul, you had a question?
Yes, as anyone who's sold a business, there's usually an escrow account, which will follow the dissolution of a business when sold, such as I had sold my business. And years later, you will find dissolution items that show up many five years later, which may be a $16.51 legal bill that shows up. And in that escrow account, which is our town coffers, much like my escrow account gets paid. That's how that gets done.
And Paul, are you stating that you know that that's how this happened? Or you're just conjecture? You have no, you have no authority, you have no knowledge that that's what this happened, Paul, unless you can tell me that you do.
Jack?
So listen.
May I have the floor?
Yes, you can answer the question.
Thank you. These typically show up after dissolutions of businesses. So this is entirely reasonable. Yes.
So you know that this is, that's the result of this? With factual knowledge? Yes or no? And then we'll move on.
I have the facts before me. Yes.
Okay.
Great.
It's on the record.
I think we have, we have two, we have two separate issues. The only one I'm concerned about now is the, this unpaid bills warrant article. Corey, you have your hand up. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would. And just, you know, as somebody who runs a business and deals with, Billy, the fact that we have is the budget we have and these, you know, we have six items here, I think is fairly impressive. So I would like to make a motion that we approve, we recommend Article Six to, we recommend Article Six at town meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack, great. And I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Thank you. That is recommended to a meeting by a vote of five to zero. Okay, the next one is supplemental appropriations.
And this is just one item. This is the funding for 143 TV. And Don Pied will update the number as we get to town meeting because there's one last quarter coming due, and we should have it shortly. And this is just a pass through of the money from Comcast and Verizon. And again, we would have normally done the first half of this in the fall, but we didn't have a town meeting. So we are still exploring alternatives to maybe accelerate this. And it's something that we'll, we'll pick up once we get all this paid. And if we find an alternative system, we'll put it out, we'll talk it all through with all of you. And then if it works, the town meeting can then adopt an alternative. So.
Great, thank you. Any questions on this article? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend Article Seven, supplemental appropriations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, beginning with Jack.
Jack, great. And I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
The next article is transfers to stabilization funds. And these are in, excuse me, these are in two buckets. I would say the first four and the second three, and I'll, the last three I'll explain. Traditionally, at the full-time meaning, certified free cash would then be carved up and put into various buckets. And that's what the first four are. But, and again, the, the financial policies also say, you know, you hit certain things first, stabilization being one of them, and then extra goes into capital stabilization. Free cash is generally put into things that are either stabilization funds or one-time cost items. The, the capital stabilization is 750. That would have happened in the fall. The Oakhead Trust Fund, this is the, the following, the policy, what advisory adopted, this is the second payment from fiscal year, the 300,000 going to stable stabilization, again, would have happened in the fall. And then the special ed stabilization fund, one that was created by active town meeting that's managed by both the school committee and the board. Should it have to be tapped because of an un. Should it have to be tapped because of an unplanned special education expense? That's generally funded and and a number that's roughly equivalent to what the schools have turned back and they've turned back a little bit of money every year. The next three are. Well, two of the next three are ones that come up every year as transfers to general revenue in terms of capital stabilization, that's the roll off. That's, you know, the the floor was set back in twenty ten and this is this year's contribution. To capital stabilization, that's in the general revenues of the town that goes to effect on July first. The first four would go into effect immediately in this fiscal year. The second three go into effect on July one and the next fiscal year. They get the first one is capital stabilization, the next one is going to the open trust fund and that's the contribution. That we would have put into the budget, but because of where we are right now, the recommendation is use free cash on that for next fiscal year. And then the other is coming out of sewer. Regular contribution from their budget into their capital stabilization. The advisory committee recommended approval of recommended to town by above seven to nothing. Or any questions?
No questions, other than that that capital number is good. Lord knows, that's been woefully underfunded in the past.
I'd like to make a motion that the board recommend Article Eight.
Is there a second? Second, got a second. Roll call, please, beginning with Jack.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Article nine is capital, that is coming to you next week on April sixth. They did a lot of voting last night, so I think that that package is pretty much together. The next one is, this is an annual article. That's the revolving fund annual spending limits and this is the same as last year. And it's the seven funds. So the advisor recommended approval to town any by vote of seven to nothing.
Okay, any questions on this, on the revolving funds? Uh, Paul?
Yeah, I have a quick one. So with the modern Massachusetts Massachusetts Modernization Act. Is this going to be able to be done without going through a town meeting in the future? Or is this still because the limits are necessary that it has to go through town meeting?
Yeah, the the funds themselves have used to be created every year. Now, the funds are permanent. But the spending, the spending limits have to be set every year. Yes, this is, this was the the decision they made. This may go away at some point. Cause the funny thing is that, or the reality is that this board can amend these during the course of the year anyway if they needed to. But the the act requires, even though the funds are now in bylaws, you don't have to read approve the funds every year, you have to set the spending. So that's that's in the act, so.
I make a motion, we approve a recommended town meeting, Article Ten Departmental Revolving Funds Annual Spending Limits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, beginning with Jack.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
The next one is one time cost articles and we talked about that last week. These are things that are nonrecurring and there's a variety of things in here. I will start one of the change that the we're recommending a change in first. It's the third autumn, the tennis court study. Conversation with advisory and based on everything else that's happened in the last couple of weeks. The recommendation was that be broadened to courts and fields. And I asked, and I asked Michelle to work up a proposal with the company that was gonna do the tennis courts. And they'll add three locations for fields. And when again, this is not just, you know, looking at math. It's like going at the site and seeing can we work it and how would it fit and 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 what would, you know, what would it cost to to lay these out? So that would double to forty. So we we do forty and that would do fields and tennis court locations.
Should should, I mean, I would like just for, I totally agree, I was gonna ask for additional funds in this. Given the conversations we're having and the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago about creating like a comprehensive field analysis committee. But again, I would, I would love for the word, the wording to be very carefully crafted in the warrant. That this is more than just a study, because studies have a a negative connotation that they're just more things that sit on a shelf. So I think it's really just assessment and analysis and, you know, you know, citing. Plan or whatever we think we can get for forty thousand dollars for all of our fields.
And that's actually a more accurate reflection. It's really a citing analysis. It's not a study, you know, it's not, do we need them? Okay, that's already established, right? So it's not, it's not a use study, it's a, it's a citing analysis. And and what would amount to a sketch plan for these, right? So we get, it would be a layout. It wouldn't be construction documents, but it would be the, you know, the first step, like a schematic they would lay out.
Right, given, given all the needs that we have in town and the the places where we have fields. What can we do to maximize the usage of them?
So so that would be, and again, that's the one that that that's the only one of these that the advisor committee kind of. Because we talked about this and I said it would carry back to all of you to see if you'd make that modification. So. I'll leave that open for the moment, so but that's the recommendation is like on a forty and then it'd be, again, I'll change the signing and that, you know. Athletic field setting analysis or something like that, right?
Do you think it makes sense for them to revoke the whole article once that information's in there?
They've already voted for all the others, so I'll bring it back to them on, if you vote this tonight, I'll bring it back to them on Thursday and they'll. That, I mean, if you wanna, I mean, look, if you want or if you'd rather wait for them to vote the whole thing again, that's fine. And I'll just carry it back and say, we can move this to forty and have them revote it and then bring it back. I mean, there's no, we have plenty of time on this. Does anyone have any questions on the other items? I'm happy to answer them, so.
I I I think just having them revoke the full article, just so that we can get rid of the seven to zero. And then a secondary thing and it just, just to keep it straight.
That's fine. I mean, that's what I would say anyway, so if they, if they, it's separately seven to nothing, right? The only problem is it may be a different number because.
Right.
It shouldn't couldn't be there because of family commitment, so there may be eight members there next week, right? Does anyone have, if nobody has any questions on the other items, I'll move on to the next one. And we'll just wait for this for next.
Next couple are easy, yep.
Okay, yeah, the next two are just a just routine. So by the way, can I, the only thing I'd ask, can you? I'm guessing I'm not hearing no, that I'll put this in at forty with with, I'm just getting a consensus forty and 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 field, field sighting, right? Okay.
Absolutely. And and if Michelle comes back with a different number or a different scope.
Well, she came back with today, so I asked her to quickly, to quickly get me something, so.
Got it, okay.
It was, it was actually like, I think it was technically sixteen plus nineteen, but I ran it at forty, because it's never, you know, if we don't spend it, I don't wanna undercut us.
Okay, yes.
What is it? Annual article, it's messages, general laws, chapter ninety one liability. Basically, this has to be adopted every year as a prerequisite for any state funds that we would get. That would work in that chapter ninety one intertidal zone, which is basically the entire coastline, particularly around the harbor. Like seawall money or work for Parker Ave and all that stuff, the boat ramp, I mean, we we need to have this in place, so. Just an annual article, the advisory committee recommended approval to ten minutes by above seven to nothing.
Is there any questions or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the select board recommend Article. What was this?
Well.
Article twelve to town meeting.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call, please.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
And next up is Article Thirteen, which is the real estate exemptions.
Yes, and and this is again, this is an annual renewal. I have to change the language and the informational summary, but this is a. This covers a variety of veterans exemptions and elderly and disabled senior exam. And again, it was recommended by above seven to nothing by the.
Okay, any questions from the board or a motion?
Make a motion, we recommend to town meeting floor Article Thirteen Additional Real Estate Exemptions Annual Renewal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
And let me just jump ahead, so. Article nineteen is gonna be withdrawn. The safe harbor folks have decided to withdraw this for the time being and and work on other alternatives. I know they're doing a quite extensive work with the folks around the harbor to to cut down on drunk boating. And to really, you know, get people to be attentive to how dangerous alcohol could be on the water. So that's a big project of theirs this summer. So this is gonna come off. One thing I would actually ask if you would vote tonight would be this one, just to put on the warrant officially. This is the dead authorization for the South Shore Regional Vocational School District. A presentation was made by the superintendent Tom Mickey last week to advisory. He's coming to you on the thirteenth in two weeks. And so this is the advisor is recommending a vote, recommending this. I I I think you would want to hear the presentation from Superintendent Hickey first.
So tonight's, tonight's action is.
Just to put it on the warrant.
Just to put it on the warrant.
I make a motion, we place Article, I guess it would be Article Nineteen Dead Authorization for this South Shore Regional Vocational School District. South Shore Regional Vocational Technical High School on the warrant.
Great, is there a second? Corey, second from Corey, roll call, beginning with Jack.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Harry, sorry, sorry, Paul. Carrie Thompson, I.
No, you're moving us right along.
Excited for articles.
Exactly, great, okay. Terrific, so we're good with all of this.
Advisory on Thursday will will hear Water and Sewer. And several other articles as well, so hopefully they'll be ready to be teed up for you next week. Perhaps, we'll we'll see how that shakes out, so I'll talk to you and Carrie about just finalizing that. They're also gonna be hearing the zoning articles on the eighth. And and that, also the planning board has has recommended nine, the articles that they had, well, one came off, the large home review. Has been withdrawn. The nine, they've all recommended the planning board, so they're going to advisory and then the plant. Folks on the thirteenth, thirteenth is gonna be kind of a long night. I'm gonna ask that you consider if it's at all possible to start meeting at six. So you can get some, because you have, that's a joint meeting with the advisory to hear the school budget proposal. So you might wanna start a little earlier that evening to get some of the more routine stuff out of the way, so.
That's the thirteenth?
That's the thirteenth.
And that's also the planning articles.
Well, we could move that, so it becomes if if that's, if if you know, the school budget could, I don't, I'm not aware there's anything terribly controversial on it at the moment. I think it's, that said, there's always questions. So the the zoning articles are, I have a better feel for when advisor talks about, might say that from my my. The impression I'm getting is that the vast majority of them are pretty tame. There are a couple, though, like adding a use variance capability into the code, which doesn't exist right now. And the ledger removal issue as well, those are ones that probably engage a little conversation, I'd say. So if you want me to pick a duck on the night for that, I could. I mean, there's no reason that you can't hear the presentations before advisory does. If you want to do them next week, I could do them next week. I mean, but that's capital, capital and CPC are next week. Those are gonna be fairly long. I mean, it's just not.
Yep.
You don't wanna go too late, because you wanna have a little time, so you have, I can, we can talk more about this, but.
Okay.
That's coming. And then Water and Sewer, you know, let's kind of circle back with you folks as well.
There's a, there's a few other articles that I don't want to lose. Focus on, especially if they need to go to advisory. The 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 solar lease of the water. And also the Affordable Housing Trust article we placed on the warrant while.
So those are, those are likely advisory meets this way, they may, they may send them in every week as well. So enough time to hit all of these. I mean, we're tracking them all now, so. We're gonna, so there's, there's just a handful left that have to be. Slotted in and I'm.
That aren't department specific.
I think we're, I I think we'll be fine, you know. I just, you know, ask everyone to be flexible. The the goal is to have this wrap up at the twenties, you can go December, it'll still be okay if you need to one more meeting. But at this point, I think we're on target to to get it all reviewed up or down over the next few weeks.
Right, so if I can move us along in the agenda, because we're far behind. But we might actually make up some ground in in flying through the next couple of agenda items. Chris, the next one is whether there's an update on Treats Pond.
Yes, so I just wanted to give a quick update to every, everyone at the request of the board. So the town has been working with all the roadside neighbors and this is Sandy Cove area we're talking about. To craft an alternative to the current plan, which is adopted by town meeting and funded several years back. Which which would extend the existing pipe and the existing pipe currently backs up under six feet of sand, which is the reason this has been a problem. And this alternative would push it further out into Sandy Cove at a safe depth. That would keep it underwater, both at low and high tides and keep it safe, both from swimmers and from boats. And and the and the exact specs of that are being worked out, so the 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 conversations have started with neighbors. That are most directly affected. And town council is now working on easement language and also a draft warrant article that would potentially go to town meeting. If you want to put it there if it needs to. And there's a potential that there might be some additional funding needed to complete this work.
Okay.
So the hope is that this will wrap up so that you can have, it'll be a public, an opportunity for you folks to have a public meeting. Either at a regular meeting or another night to hear the neighbors and to move this forward. This has become a literally weekly, weekly event, so there's been lots of conversations and. It's been, it's been productive. I I mean, I won't say that that it's done. But I will say that there's been an openness and and a productiveness. And my hope is that this will continue to move forward positively.
Do you anticipate that we'll have, I mean, you know, within two weeks, we'll, we'll have a, have a path and a warrant article or not?
Yes, I I, you know, there is a, there is some draft language kicking around. I think the goal is to see if we can't get. To yes, at least preliminarily, so that we can have an article. And again, even if some of the details are very polished out over the next few weeks, but you know, the warrant has to lock by the end of the month, end of April. So we have a little time. That said, if there's still a little bit more polishing that has been done, there's time to perform a twenty fourth. But I think there has, there has to be some really big check marks. People have to, you know, kind of consent into the concept and we have a path. I I'm not telling you there aren't gonna be some hiccups and some twists, because they have been all along. I'm hoping to keep them, we, I'm I'm hoping we can keep them to a minimum, so.
Great. Okay, good.
That's, that's the quick update, so.
Okay, any questions? All right.
All right, I'm buying your time. So very quickly, I I I'd like to do this a little more formally. So as I said, we were planning for. Tree, so Earth Earth Day planning is coming up, so we have Earth Day on the twenty fourth. And I'm telling you, we're planning for Arbor Day, because we might actually have something to celebrate on Arbor Day as well. I want officially announce that, but you can, I'm telegraphing good news to come. We did apply for to to become a Tree City USA, so that's, that's good. The, and you heard tonight with Tanya talking about celebrating all the new charging stations that we got funded. They're all, you know, there's this two, there's one in the upper library, one's lower by rec. Was the the main parking lot at the village has them now, the schools have them now. And they're here as well, so they've been put in a lot of locations, and we've actually even explored other locations, because National Grid is looking to put these everywhere. And the state is looking to fund them, so just only so many municipal places we could do this. We even talked about maybe doing it at the beach, but I don't think we're quite ready to do that yet, so. So that's happening and I I also say that I, I'll more formally announce this with with Don and Paula at a meeting. But we did receive notification that the town won an award again for a budget presentation for FY twenty, so. A lot of, lot of work went into that and I'm grateful that the GFOA made that award, so.
Congratulations.
That's, that's my quick update on. And also, just just so you're also aware that we're working to go to put a package of things into this. One stop for review, one stop review grant review plan.
Yes.
Next week, and that will, well, we can put up up to five projects for review. This is not for applications, this is to vet them with the state to to, and that includes the industry court work, which is very. So we're optimistic that of the group of five, and one of them also involves energy and. Go review is this, this five, I think, mini things. Whether or not we apply for all five is an open question, but I think Elm Street. Because of this, we're making it a priority and also all the work is being done. It's gotta be the number one priority for funding that we will, we will apply for.
Um, I I see two select people have their hands up, but really before then, when I was cutting in and out and I apologize for that all night. But Tanya mentioned some kind of a ribbon cutting. Or something around the charging stations, I believe I didn't miss. I'm only concerned as much as it makes sense on Earth Day that we are mindful of public events. And, you know, the limitations that we've been placing on others, so we just need to think that through before we make any commitments. So Paul and then Jack.
Okay, Jack's first.
Okay, sorry, Jack.
Oh, Paul, you you did it before, you go first this time.
So I missed the the date of the Arbor Day.
It's Friday, April thirtieth is what we're planning for. That is Arbor Day in Massachusetts. So the goal is to get some tree, trees planted. So we will definitely let you all know exactly what and where. I'm hoping that that we get their hands on some, some Elms, be able to plant in some prominent locations. And we'll try to make this an annual tradition. So this will be the first.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, yeah, Chris, I, I know we're moving forward to finally getting the youth center open. And I was wondering if maybe, you know, we could work together and make it some kind of virtual ceremony, because I assume we're going to get it done certainly by mid to late spring. So is that something that makes some sense? We can work together to make, I think we really want to make it an event. Celebrate safe harbor and the youth center.
I agree, and and as the presentation, I think, indicated, Jack, the opening day of this will be September, right at the beginning of school. The, and at that point, we should all be able to do this in person. And the, what's happening now is the, the youth are engaging in planning for this, you know, getting a name, for example. There's a contest going on to name the, the center. And and also, you know, we're still saying, we actually got a contribution, by the way, from us, from a resident who, who, to, they made a contribution to help support the programming for the center, which is exciting.
Right.
And I, they've already started a little bit of work and they have a facilities that has, is, is ready to go with windows and a door once funding finally approved, but that's all. I, I'm excited that the work is going to continue. If anybody wants to go down and take a look, we're doing the work, that's great.
Oh, yeah.
And, well, Jack, if you don't open it up, and 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 again, I hope all of you are front and center with it, with it. Hopefully you'll all be able to stand right next to each other with a, with the ceremonial scissors and cut that ribbon. And again, I don't remember the exact date, but it's, I think the same day as school start, and that's.
Okay. I seem to have missed some of the notifications. So you want, can you make sure you keep me in the loop?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Be a fun little one, four, three walkthrough when they're installing a door or something. Think about that, so.
Yeah, actually, that's not a bad idea, maybe to get like a pre store.
Generate some, this is what's happening. And even if something little is happening before town meeting, it'll help, you know.
And that's what's, and that's what's happening now. And again, Jack, all the encouragement for everyone in town to say, hey, if you want to support this, that this, you know, you, if you could support it, if you're willing to make contribution, whether it's to safe harbor or to recreation directly. They're taking it to gift accounts, so it's except for when some real, the, the kids seem to really be engaging in this and it should be a real, real fun, real fun opportunity for everybody.
We are so lucky to have safe harbor.
We, we are, I'm going to project because I have a lot to to bring up during a select board comment period, so I'm going to try to move us along. I'm sorry about that, Corey. Jack, do you have anything else?
No.
You want to add? Great. Corey. He's like, please, no, Diane.
I'm just laughing at the, the, what you just said, sorry, just the volume of stuff you have coming.
I do, unfortunately, Paul.
I'm good.
Yep, Carrie.
I'm good.
Okay, so really quickly, I, I just want for Chris to, to, there's been unbelievable amounts of communication to me on many, many topics. And as I said earlier, a lot of people are in their homes twenty four seven or on their property, so things are becoming a little more acute. So we've had some conversations about sidewalks on Beechwood, parking on Heather Drive, accessing Willwright Park and needing some kind of whatever, some, some solutions to that Lambert's Lane speeding, especially with the, the, the beginning of the golf season. And then also just an inquiry on signage, which I think I brought up last week on the, the signs we were going to put in the village. So those are all kind of one topic. And I, I think at some point, once we get through a couple of weeks of the, the warrant, wrapping that up, we should probably have a more fulsome conversation about some of these safety, traffic, parking issues, especially before we head into the summer months, because they're, they're eating at a lot of residents in town. Really quickly, I also just wanted people to put on their calendar that the Elm Street Corridor is working with a consultant and there's going to be a Zoom public hearing on April fifteenth at seven PM. And that really is critical that we have a lot of people in town weighing in on that, certainly for the Economic Task Force. I think that's probably important to, to make sure the businesses and the members of that committee are there. So just stay tuned on all of that. It's Lauren Lynn's pushing it out through planning and master plan, so that's coming up. I want to remind all the select board members to sign, to stop by town hall or talk to, connect with Tracy to make sure you sign the police contract by tomorrow, if at all possible. She needs at least three signatures on that. We had talked a few about a month ago about a walkthrough at Red Lion Inn, so that as we look at potentially expanding some of their, their hours or spaces that we have a better sense of what's there. So Geom has reached out to the town a number of times to see if we would be, when we might be able to do it, a tour. We could, we could do it in a couple of shifts, we could do it together, you know, masked, et cetera. It's probably easier if we go over, you know, two by two or, or so. If you could let your, let Tracy know your availability in the next, say, week and a half to just take a twenty minute tour. And then Tracy, if you could just kind of collect general availability and see if we could get a couple of people over at once so that they're not doing five separate walkthroughs. And lastly, I just want to put on everybody's radar, particularly Carrie, because I know she's working on initiatives for June, but I, I think what happened in Duxbury this past week was horrifying. And, and then I know that they, there was a big meeting with the, with the select board. And I thought, oh, my gosh, I would not want to be on a select board having to address some, some racial, serious racial issues in, in the community. So I, I would like us maybe in the next month or so to think about crafting some kind of a diversity or inclusive statement for the town. I know a lot of communities are doing that, which is basically just sort of a stake in the ground that says we believe in the value of all human beings and we look for a community that works together to, you know, whatever. So I would just wanted to put that out there because I think it's, it's unfortunately topical, it's local, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stress in people's lives and, and I'd like to be in front of it and make some kind of a formal statement that we could adopt sometime in the next couple of months. So with that, there's two sets of minutes. We'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from February twenty third, twenty twenty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
As clerk again, tell such time as we have a, an accurate electronic method of doing the, the minutes I abstain.
Okay.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay, and a motion on the minutes for the twenty third of March.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the select board of March twenty three, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Second.
Great, roll call, please.
Can I just, Jack Creighton ditto for the abstain?
Say nay would be better, especially for the recorded version.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great, thank you. I have no topics not reasonably anticipated, so I will call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
To the second.
Four comments, no?
Maybe somebody should abstain from it just to.
No, we did select board comments. Do you have a comment?
No, we've done that.
Yeah, we did it, Corey, you said you're good.
Oh, I thought we were, great, a motion dismissed. I, I, I do, I do want to mention
Go ahead.
If you all want to entertain me, thank you very much. I've seen a lot this night.
I withdraw my motion to adjourn.
A, a few months ago, we had an event in town that involved some high school students and a party with alcohol that caused a lot of disruption for the town in the schools because of COVID protocols. It also created a lot of discussion about how this town deals with underage drinking. And Safe Harbor has launched a program called Our Safe Home, which is encouraging class of families to learn about and make a pledge to really address this problem at home. Dealing with underage drinking begins and ends at home. And the Safe Harbor reached out to all of us to ask for our support. So I am verbally saying here, I encourage everyone in town, whether you have kids or not, to learn about the pledge, take the pledge and become part of the solution and do this sooner rather than later, because, you know, this is not something I could wait. Thanks.
Thanks, Corey. I'm glad you said that because it was on my list and I signed the pledge earlier. So I encourage everybody to do so, encourage your friends to do so. All right, with that.
I agree with Corey, by the way, and this twenty one thing that was pulled from the agenda, we need to work on that with Safe Harbor. It's very important. And if that's it, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Great, roll call.
Jack Creighton, I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Yeah, good night, everyone.